Okay, great. I think everybody's here. It's 6:30, so I'll open the Board of Selectments meeting for Thursday, January 28, 2021. It's 6:30. So it looks like we have quite a few people joining us today. So let me get right into this. We have some, some people that are going to make a presentation and only out before I turn it over to our experts, I'll let you go through sort of procedures in terms of chatting and questions and answers, but we'll get to that in a minute. But let me just say good evening and thank you all for joining us in tonight's meeting. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to begin a discussion about eminent domain in regards to the Northeastern proposed development on its campus at East Point. I'd like to preface my remarks by saying eminent domain is not the only solution to protecting the natural resource area at East Point. Many in town, including members of the Board of Selectment, remain willing and open to furthering our discussion with Northeastern University to find a mutual, mutually agreeable alternative for their proposed expansion. And I hope that that happens, and I hope that this isn't necessary, but we need to be prepared in the event that we do. Tonight's meeting will be a presentation by experts in the field of municipal law in eminent domain. It is not a meeting to debate the merits of eminent domain. That will take place, if necessary, at town meeting. So before I introduce our experts here, I'll ask my two colleagues, Josh, Gene, if you have any opening comments before I introduce our guests?
Yes, sure. Can you all hear me? So I'm glad we have the opportunity to discuss eminent domain. We've had that opportunity in Board of Selectmen executive sessions with attorneys Blake and Masterman. So we're fortunate to have attorney Blake, who from KP Law, many of you recognize Mr. Blake. He's represented Nahada a lot of legal matters. Attorney Masterman is one of the leading eminent domain legal experts in the country. And they're here tonight to share their, share facts and their experiences with us all. So exciting opportunity for the public to learn, to learn facts from experienced experts in this field. So to many of us, including me, until several months ago, eminent domain seemed like a sort of obscure and extreme measure, but we're fortunate to have these two attorneys here. And I think we'll learn that it's not so unusual to use eminent domain for conservation purposes. I hope that tonight's session will allow Nahad citizens to make informed decisions for themselves. That's our goal really here is to provide the information so that decisions made are made on facts and experienced professional opinions around speculation and normal and so on. So just grateful for the opportunity and I hope as many Nahadres as possible take this opportunity. So thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Gene, would you like to say anything?
No, just that I hope everybody takes this in the text that you described and that we come away from this having a clear understanding of what this is, at least defined understanding of what we're looking at here.
Okay. Tony, can you explain to people how you want to handle questions and answers before I introduce Jeff and Jim?
Sure. So after the chairman introduces legal counsel and they get through their presentation of information, the chairman will open it up for Q and A. I have the chat function turned off or it's on, but you can only send the chat to me at the moment. You know, we wanted to try to organize as best as possible, a fair equitable Q and A session similar to, you know, how we have a town meeting when you get in line and, and you're, and you're waiting for your turn to speak at the microphone. It's a little bit harder to do, right, here on Zoom. So if, when we get to that point of the Q and A, just write in the chat section to me your name. And what I will do is call on you and at that point you will have the microphone to say your name, your address, and your question. I think that it's important, you know, to realize that there are quite a few people on tonight, and I'm sure there'll be a number of different questions. So maybe we could do, you know, limit it to one question per person and then you get to the back of the line so that someone else can ask their question and try to, you know, keep it to a minute or so of airtime. And with that, I'll just do my best to, to keep it moving.
Thank you, Tony. And we're going to try to limit this to about 8:30, give us about a two hour window. It's not hard and fast, but we like to try to wrap it up by about 8:30, if that's possible. So with that said, let me introduce our two attorneys. First, Attorney Jeff Blake. Attorney Blake has extensive experience in all aspects of municipal law. He has represented cities and towns in the Commonwealth for more than 18 years. Attorney Blake specializes in property valuation defense for his municipal clients, including real property valuation defense before the appellate tax board and eminent domain defense before all state and federal courts in the Commonwealth. Specifically with respect to eminent domain, Attorney Blake has handled hundreds of eminent domain matters for his clients ranging from very small utility easements to large fee takings with dollar values ranging from the hundreds to the millions. Also with us tonight is Attorney James Masterman. Mr. Masterman is a trial lawyer with a broad range of experience in eminent domain and real estate valuation litigation, including tax proceedings with tax, with lease arbitration and the litigation of land use and property right issues. His representation of commercial, industrial and residential property owners and developers requires, developers requires his appearance in U.S. District Courts, U.S. Bankruptcy Courts in every state and administrative court of Massachusetts and throughout New England. His advice is sought by multi-property clients on a national basis, on all aspects of eminent domain, and by developers seeking public assistance with land disamblesges for large scale public-private partnership projects. Jim served as Chair of the American Bar Association, Association's Committee on Condemnation and Land Use Litigation and is a frequent lecturer on the subject. Jim has also been listed as in the Best Lawyers in America in eminent domain and condemnation law. He's also awarded the Lawyer of the Year in eminent domain and condemnation law in Boston in 2013, 2016, 2018, and 2020. So we have some pretty well-established professionals here to bring us through this. I'll turn this over to you, Jeff, if you want to take off.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, as you indicated, my name is Jeff Blake and I'm here from KP Law. I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank everybody here tonight. I think the first town meeting that I ever attended with you guys was wildly attended by hundreds and hundreds of people. And I commented then how nice it is to see such community and civic involvement. And I'm here tonight seeing lots and lots of people. I do these quite a bit. And this is going to be one of the probably the best attended Zoom meetings that I've ever seen. So kudos to everybody here. I hope all is well with everyone and everybody is staying safe in these, in these interesting times. As the chairman indicated, I'm Jeff Blake from KP Law. Some of you or most of you may have seen me at the town meetings if you attended. As you may know, KP Law is the leader in municipal law in the Commonwealth. We are the biggest municipal law firm in the Commonwealth. And we represent as town council or city solicitor approximately 130 cities and towns, and we do special counsel work for many more. So we represent 4200 of the 351, 351 towns and cities in the Commonwealth. As you can imagine, with that many municipal clients, we handle lots and lots of eminent domain cases. From our very small sewer easements and other utility easements to the larger takings for municipal buildings, for libraries, for police stations, for fire stations, for parks, conservation, you name it, we've handled it at KP Law. And as Josh, the member of the Board of Selectmen, had indicated, eminent domain is not some new fangled or new concept. Eminent domain is as old as the country itself. In fact, the U.S. Constitution recognizes a right of the government to take property. I've not checked all, but I believe all state constitutions provide for the taking, for taking, with the touchstone being the taking must be one, for a public purpose, and two, the taking authority must pay just compensation. With that, the Massachusetts Constitution authorizes eminent domain, but it's implemented by, through two statutes here in the Commonwealth. And that's really what I want to kind of go over with everybody. I want to give you a flavor for, I'm not going to go into extraordinarily depth on each one, but there are differences in each, and I want to just give you a flavor for them. So the first one is Chapter 79, and the next one is Chapter 80A, and that's the number 80, letter A. Those two statutes are the ones that authorize and implement the taking of real property and other rights by a taking authority. So with respect to Chapter 79, that's the one that we all know about. That's the one where we go to town meeting to get authorization to take sewer easements over, you know, XYZ street, and the town authorizes that. We put together appropriation and we move forward with an order of taking and we record the order taken and we own the property. So the next one is ADA, which again is a little different, and I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. But I'm going to go back to Chapter 79, just so, I'm just going to try to run down through to give you guys kind of a checklist of how this goes about. The acquisition of property by a town requires a town meeting vote with an appropriation. The appropriation is supposed to, under the statute, under Chapter 79, approximate the fair market value of the property using its highest and best use. And in the way we get to that is we commission an appraisal report prior to going to town meeting and prior to getting our, our appropriation. So we are able to set the value by getting a appraisal report typically done by a qualified appraiser. A plan is drawn up to demonstrate or to indicate the, the property that's being taken so that we understand and we are able to record that later. The town needs to, prior to going to town meeting and prior to getting its appropriation, needs to determine what interest will be taking, taken. And why I say that, and I don't want to go too deep into this, but why I say that is because in property law, there are a whole bundle of rights that come with your property. Most of us in here own our own home. We own our own home and fee simple absolute with little or no other restrictions, for example, easements or conservation restrictions. If we as a town want to take a property and our sole purpose or sole goal is to be able to access a beach, to be able to access a, a field behind it that we're using for athletics, we would not necessarily take the entire property in fee simple, all the bundle of rights, but rather we would take an easement, the ability for us to go to pass and repass over a certain area. Or, which I'm finding to be a lot more common now, is we might take a conservation restriction. A conservation restriction would prevent anybody from developing the property. They get to keep their property, they get to use it, provided it's not, it doesn't contradict the, the, the conservation of the property. So the town would have to then come up with the interest to be taken. We would of course go through our title research to the extent that there are buildings on there. We inspect the buildings. Then, once we have all those ducks in a row, we put together a town meeting warrant article that asked the people of the town to authorize us to take by eminent domain the parcel located X, Y, and Z and shown on the plan that we've drawn up with the, with the appropriation of whatever we appraise the value at. The town votes, the town meeting votes are, and again, I don't want to get too far down this road, but the town meeting votes are typically a two-thirds vote when we have an appropriation. There are some limited circumstances where the, the vote may not be two-thirds, but it's, it's safe to say that it's typically a two-thirds vote. Once the town meeting authorizes the, the Board of Selectmen to take and authorizes the appropriation, it's then thrown into the, back to the Board of Selectmen who then vote to take. And what, by, by doing that, they issue what is known as an order of taking. The order of taking is adopted by the Board of Selectmen and recorded. Once it's recorded, I'm sorry, it must be recorded within 30 days from their vote. And once it's recorded, we then send out what is known as a notice of taking. Once the notice of taking is sent out and recorded with the registry of deed, the town is then the owner, and this is the, the important distinction between ADA and 79. The town then owns the property. So it goes relatively quickly. Once we get the town meeting vote, the Board of Selectmen could hold a hearing the next, hold a meeting the next day, issue the order of taking, we record the order of taking. Once it's recorded, we own the property and we have the right to immediately occupy the property. Now, if it's a house or if it's a building, there are certain requirements for relocation costs and the like. But then the property owner is, excuse me, the property owner has three years from the taking, from the date that we record the order of taking, to challenge that in court. Property owner challenges it on a, on two bases. Remember I said back before that the touchstone to all the takings are public purpose and value and just compensation. So a property owner has the ability to say, this wasn't a public purpose, and I think the, the taking should be invalid. And the property owner at the same time could also say, and if it is valid, then you didn't pay me enough. Typically, the latter is the case, that is, that they say, you didn't pay me enough. A public purpose, finding a public purpose for a taken, taking is usually quite easy, you know, conservation, buildings for, for, for public safety, the like, the sewer and the like. So that's typically not the basis that we really get a lot of challenges. Once the order is, the, the taking is appealed, the taking would then go to the Superior Court, and at the Superior Court, it would go before a jury. And the jury would then be able to, is then asked to decide what the fair market value of the property is using its highest and best use. Both sides present their case to the jury. The jury comes back and it renders a verdict that I agree with the town that it, it was worth $100,000. No, I agree with the, the, the property owner, it was worth $300,000 or somewhere in between. So the jury has a fair amount of latitude in making a determination as to what its determination of fair market value is. Again, we, even when that process is going along, we have the right, we own the property, and we have the right to occupy that property. Some of the, the bigger advantages and why Chapter 79 is by far the most used statute and method for takings, the biggest advantage is that we own the property immediately. Most of the, most of the takings that we do as municipalities are for sewer pumping stations, sewer projects, bridge projects, the like, where we need to be able to have control of the property quickly to qualify for grants, to qualify for funding, and to qualify for the like. Some of the other properties, some of the other reasons for taking, conservation and the like, we may not have the, the need to occupy the properties quickly, but they are typically, the, the Chapter 79 is what is typically used then. With respect to any appeal, both parties are responsible for their own legal costs and their expert fees and costs. So that is a, that is a distinct difference, and we'll just talk about that in a minute with respect to Chapter ADA. But that's Chapter 79. It's a broad brush and we can certainly go over some additional questions, but, but that's the broad brush of Chapter 79. Chapter ADA is different and it's a very seldom-used method of taking in the Commonwealth. The, the cases in the Commonwealth interpreting ADA are few. However, there are a few, and there, the Supreme Judicial Court observed that this chapter authorized eminent domain proceedings quite unlike those in Chapter 79. As you can recall, I had indicated that there was a fair amount of preparatory work in order to go forward with a Chapter 79 taking. We needed the appraisal report, a plan of the property, interest to be taken, and the like. That still needs to be done with Chapter ADA. You still need to go to town meeting and get authorization and an appropriation for the taking. But that's where the similarities really start to park. With respect to ADA, we have the ability at the Board of Selectmen, once they're authorized, to adopt an order of an intention to make a taking, which is different than if you recall back before, I said that the Board of Selectmen adopt an order of taking. This is an intention to, to, to take. And what that does is we send the notices to all the registered parties and, and we record it with the registry within 10 days. Within 10 days of recording this petition, we institute a proceeding in rem, and I know this is getting a little legally, but in rem means against the property in the Superior Court. Once that's done, the property owner then has the ability to answer. And in that answer, they can either say the, they can either challenge the validity, like we said before, of the taking, it wasn't for a public purpose. And if that's the, the case, then we're, we have a hearing on that. If an order is entered in the Superior Court, meaning that there was no irregularity and it was a valid taking, establishing a right to take, then the court puts together and appoints a panel of three commissioners to make a determination as to the fair market value or the sufficiency of the compensation given. So if you recall before, in Chapter 79, we did an order of taking, we owned it. And then later, the appeal of the validity or the value given would go to a Superior Court. Here, as I'm going through this process, it's important to note, we don't own this property yet. We have done our intention to take, we've gone to court, we filed it. The other side, to the extent that they do file an answer, if they don't, that means they're content with what we gave them. And, and then we have the ability to make our determination as to whether or not we want to move forward. But if they do challenge the validity and/or the, the, the amount, we go to the, to the court and they appoint a commission and we make a determination as to the sufficiency of the compensation. Presumably the three people, it's a three-person board, three commissioners. Presumably they have expertise in property valuation. They make a determination as to what the, what the value is. And at that point, the town still doesn't own the property. They still have not committed. And then from there, any person who is aggrieved by the determination of the commissioners, i.e. likely the property owner, doesn't agree with the compensation given, they can go to the, the jury of the Superior Court. And at that point, they can challenge the validity or, and/or the, the compensation given. However, the three commissioner report and, and determination as to the sufficient, as to the compensation will be evidenced in the court. So at that point, a jury would be privy to what three presumably well-qualified commissioners had determined. At that point, we still don't own the property and we still have not committed to purchasing it. So, or to taking it. So once we go through the Superior Court case, again, a jury would then make a determination as to whether or not, as to what the fair market value was. And then if they determine, you know, it's, it's, it's 3 million, it's 5 million, it's, it's, it's 50,000. The town at that point, again, has the opportunity to continue to back out. It's only once we've, we're, we're through and we've determined that we are, we are content with we being the town, the taking authority is content with or wants to go forward with, after all of the determinations of value are done, that we would then be required to do our final taking of the property and we would then be, the damages would be vested and payable. So all the way through this process, we can back out. We can understand, we, we go to the three-judge panel, we can back out if they come back and it's, it's a lot higher than we wanted. We go to the jury, we can, we can do the same. Now, the rub here is, the difference here is, if you recall, I had said to you before that in the Chapter 79 proceedings, we pay for our attorney's fees, we pay for our expert fees, we pay for all the additional cost, depositions and the like. In this case of Chapter ADA, if we decide after going to the three-judge panel that, you know what, the three-judge panel came back, we believe, you know, we, we honestly believe that our, the, the, the original award that we gave was correct, but the three-judge panel came back and said, it's higher. We have at that point the ability to back out, right? However, we would be required to, and the statute says, "Any person who has suffered damage or loss or been put to expense by the proceedings shall be entitled to recover indemnity in full by order of the court for which executions shall issue." In other words, if we back out, we are then going to be responsible for a measure of damages, not necessarily to the land, although that may be also a part of it, but also to the landowner. And there is not a lot of case law out here interpreting this, but I think that there is a, a like, well, you would be, we would be on the hook for the expert fees, for expert costs, for litigation costs, possible loss of use of the property during the time that we filed our intention to take. And then of course, there may very well be the issue of the other side's attorney's fees and costs. So this is a marked difference from Chapter 79. Chapter 79, we, we get the appropriation and the authority under, from town meeting to take it, Board of Selectmen does their order of taking, we own it. We go to court, we pay, everybody pays their own costs, but we own it. We own it when we record that notice with the registry. Here, we can walk down this path a lot, you know, quite a ways, and at any time, we can say, nope, we decide not to. But the caveat, of course, is that we would be on the hook for expenses that I've outlined. So those are the two bases, two statutory procedures for an eminent domain taking. I don't want to at this point, and frankly, I don't really have an opinion at this point as to which one is better or which one is worse. As I indicated earlier in my, in my presentation about Chapter 79, Chapter 79's big advantage is we own it immediately. Chapter ADA's big advantage is that we don't Chapter 80A's big advantage is that we don't own it immediately. We haven't committed to buying the property. However, we do have the added disadvantage of possibly having to pay the other side's fees and costs and expenses with respect to that particular taking. So I think that that's all I have laying out the two chapters. I think that we're going to go on next to Attorney Masterman. Is that how you're going to do it? Well, I'll just turn it back over to the chairman. How's that?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we turn it over to Jim Masterman? And Jim, maybe you can talk a little bit about sort of the valuation, appraisals, and some of the financial risks that either of those processes would entail.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very, very well done, Mr. Blake. I will not go back over everything that Jeff has said. He has gone through that procedure, and it is a lot. But everything he said is 100% accurate in accordance with each of those statutes. And good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I was remiss in not saying that upfront, but good evening and thank you for coming out and listening to Eminent Domain for a couple of hours on a winter's evening. We don't get many audiences like this in the eminent domain world, but thank you for that. The way I like to approach the eminent domain process is sort of a simple approach, and that is, there are two parts to the eminent domain process. There is the vesting of title. How does the town acquire the land they need for whatever purpose is necessary, as long as it's public? And in this situation, make no mistake, that the proposed taking of a portion of the Northeastern property is a valid public purpose that will not be an issue in this case. And once the acquisition is made, everything else is land damages. Everything else is land damages. You have two separate discreet approaches to it. It is the taking of the title of an interest in the real estate, and then what do you have to pay for it? The ADA, it's eight-zero capital A process, turns that a little bit on its head because it allows you to take a look at the land damages first before the town commits to title. And there are benefits and there are constraints to that as well. And Jeff laid it out perfectly right. The idea of going through a process without certainty of title has certain risks. And it just depends on the nature of the project and how committed the town is to the particular project involved. In this particular situation, since we're talking about preserving conservation land, there is an opportunity here to use the ADA procedure because we're not building a school, we're not building a road where the title to the land is a certainty. In most of those other cases, as Jeff so readily pointed out, you need to acquire certainty of title so you can build your building and develop your sewer or whatever it might be. But regardless, whether you're dealing with ADA or dealing with chapter 79, the idea is for the town to acquire title. And once that is done, everything else is damages. And the way it's framed, as Jeff said, in the Constitution, is just compensation. What does just compensation mean? Just compensation in the Commonwealth and throughout the country. And Jeff is right, every state has the ability. As a matter of fact, there isn't a country unless, all Western countries have the ability to appropriate land for purposes. The determination of just compensation has come to mean fair market value. What is fair market value? I think the best way to understand what fair market value is, if you're fortunate enough to own your own home in Nahant, and you went out to sell your house, there would be the listing price, the asking price, and there would be the price at which the buyer wanted to pay for that home. And you may be fortunate enough to have a buyer come in and pay you the asking price. A buyer may go over asking price, but whatever the negotiated price is between the buyer and the seller, that is fair market value. Sure, there are good deals in the market and there are bad deals in the market. And there are exceptions, and there are fantastic opportunities, and there are tough decisions that are made. The law sees it all as one. And that is, if the property were made available for sale on the open market, what is the price that would have been paid between the willing buyer and the willing seller for that property? That's all you have to really understand about valuation. That's what the search is for, whether it's by jury or by its commissioners, under the procedures that were laid out. That's what we're trying to figure out. It's easy when it comes to a home. Why? Because there are literally thousands of transactions that happen on a daily basis across the country and certainly within the Commonwealth. Everybody knows what their house is worth. That's what we're experts in. We always know what our neighbor is selling his or her house for. We know what the house down the road sold for. We know that the house down the road might have had four bedrooms where ours had three. You doubt, a house down the road might have had 25,000 feet of land, we have 40. Those tend to be the adjustments that are made to anyone's concept of what the property is worth. You can see on a simple approach to the sale of a home, there could be a myriad of considerations that are involved just from the sale of a home. The adjustments that are made for location, the adjustments that are made for landscaping and approach. Take it to the commercial property. Take it to the shopping center, to an office building, to a medical building, to any type of property that we see on a daily basis as we go about our normal life, our lives. Those properties all buy and sell. And they buy and sell in a regular basis. And if it is a kind of property that sells on a routine basis, where there are thousands of transactions, appraisers can go into the market and try to figure out if this particular property had been made available for sale, what would be the likely price? Now, the appraisal world is more complicated than it has to be. Some of the art behind jury trials is to try to take these complicated theories of valuation and turn them into things that people can really understand. If you're dealing with a house, I think I explained how most lawyers would present a dispute over the valuation of a home. Well, what if you get into an office building, for example? Or an apartment building? Those do buy and sell, but they tend to sell on the income being generated from rent. Tenants pay rent. That rent is considered income to the building, but the landlord has expenses. So taking all that into consideration can be turned into an indication of value. What if the property was rarely bought and sold? What would it cost to reproduce this building? Appraisers sometimes look at that. But the great majority of valuation disputes and the great majority of acquisitions in the domain world and the one that is likely to happen here if the town were to go forward with something like this is going to be based on what's referred to as the comparable sales method. Comparable sales is as simple as I mentioned earlier. It is, you take a piece of property, you compare it to others in the market, and you find out what others have paid for similar properties, properties that are comparable to the one that is being valued. And like all landowners, whether it is a commercial land or it is a recreational land or is a land suitable for residential, it's a question of what has gone on the market with similar properties that have similar opportunities and constraints. What do I mean by that? When you're dealing with raw land, as we're going to talk about out in East Point, well, let me back up a second and talk about East Point in particular and the valuation issues that are presented on East Point, which I think everybody wants to hear about. How did we go about doing that? We hired an appraiser. How did the appraiser go about giving us some preliminary thoughts on valuation? And what did we see in terms of the examination of the value of this property? From our perspective, the property is, sits up on East Point in a tremendously valuable location. It, however, has constraints on the development opportunities there to the open market. What do I mean by that? If that property had been available for sale on the open market, who would have been interested in buying it? Remember, that is the key. What would a willing buyer pay to a willing seller? If that property were available for sale on the open market, who would be interested in buying it? Because the property is zoned natural resources, the market is limited. You cannot, as a matter of zoning law in the town of Nahant, develop that for residential purposes. It is recreational, it is passive recreational conservation land. No developer would be interested in going there because he can't do anything with it. What does that do to the market? That limits the market. Certainly, had a developer been able to go to that property and turn it into condominiums or residential to homes, it would be worth, well, it'd be worth what all the homes are worth up in East Point, up on all the roads throughout that area, as well as other parts of Nahant. But the limitation on value here, in our opinion, is because that's not available to the open market. The market is for users like Northeastern. And when it becomes a user like Northeastern, Northeastern is no different than any other potential user, except for one thing that we can talk about later if we want to get into. The question is, what would other users like Northeastern pay for that land? What we intend to do, if we're given permission by town meeting, is to acquire not the entire site, but only a portion of it. We have no intention of disrupting what Northeastern is doing at East Point and has done for many years. The intent is to allow Northeastern to continue to operate just the way they have, but to eliminate the potential for future expansion. We are then creating a situation where what exists today will exist in perpetuity. Northeastern will be permitted to continue to operate. The land will continue to operate, the buildings will remain intact. But so too will the recreational area. So as Jeff mentioned, you could take it all and own it all, or you can take a portion of it. Not only are we going to propose to take a portion of it, that means a portion of the land itself, the land is about 20 acres. We're talking about doing something on 12 of those 20 acres. And we are not acquiring all 12 acres, we are requiring an easement, a right to preserve the natural resource area as it presently exists. When you do that, we are then presented with the question of what is that worth? What is that worth? What is the underlying land worth? And what is the amount of money that we owe Northeastern in terms of land damages? As we looked at the limitations on development of the land, we believe that that land is most suitable for conservation. It has been used for conservation. No residential developer would be permitted to develop on that property. We looked across the region for sales that were similar for conservation land, and we believe that the property has a valuation in the range of $200,000 an acre. That is consistent, though, a little bit higher than what's been assessed for by the town. And so we're quite comfortable that this is the range of values that the land is worth. But as we indicated, we are not proposing to take it all. We're talking about taking an easement for conservation purposes, leaving Northeastern with all of its land intact. The valuation then will be of what that easement is worth and how much have we damaged Northeastern. The buildings remain intact, the land remains in ownership to Northeastern. And what we are proposing to acquire is the conservation rights, the right to use that land for conservation purpose. Some fraction of the $200,000 in valuation. The $200,000 came as a result of looking at comparable properties, and the fraction is because we're not acquiring, not proposing to acquire at all. Now, there is a, and that's our position. And I think that's the position that the appraiser took in the analysis of this property. And it's one that is grounded in the market data that we have found, and we believe that there is validity to that approach. Because only a portion of the land is being taken, there is this concept of what's known as severance damages. An owner is entitled not only to a value of the land that's been taken, but also to any damages to the property which remains. So if only a portion of the property is being acquired, the question is, have we caused any damage to what remains in Northeastern ownership? We've answered that question, no. That there is no diminution in value to the property which remains. Northeastern can continue to use the place exactly as they had used it before. What we've taken is conservation rights and their right to expand into the conservation area. We are comfortable that we have explored all of the potential claims that could be made by Northeastern or any landowner in this situation. We believe we've projected exposures as best we can to what may or may not happen, fully understanding that every landowner has an approach, that every homeowner has his right to a certain approach to valuation. We believe that when the, when these appraisals are, if it's litigated or the valuation is contested, that our analysis has been sound. We have, under no circumstances, tried to find a way to keep the limit on this land damage. We are obligated and have to pay the highest price that any landowner would otherwise receive on the open market, and we try to duplicate that market in this regard. I think that's a pretty strong summary, if I may, Mark, as to what the valuation would look like, and I defer to you.
Thank you, Jim. You know, and thank you, Jeff. I mean, for the smallest town in the Commonwealth, we have two of the best attorneys in this field in the country. So that's quite a just position on things. So thank you. I think you nailed it, both in terms of process and in terms of valuation. Tony, before we open it up to any questions and answers, I just want to check with Josh and Gene if they have anything to add.
I just wanted to make sure all the residents know that that the real estate appraisal that's been conducted, Attorney Masterman and Blake have provided a summary of that appraisal. That summary is posted on nahant.org under, I think the link is Northeastern's proposed expansion or something like that on the homepage. Correct me if I'm wrong about that, Tony, but that's how you get there. If you look at that appraisal, you'll see it's done by a man with over 40 years' experience in this field. If eminent domain were to go forward, he understands that that appraisal could be challenged in court. So I think he's not going to risk his 40-year reputation on an artificially low or artificially high appraisal. So I'd encourage people to take a look at that appraisal posted on the website. That's it. Thank you.
Also on that website, Josh is the Financial Impact Analysis that the town has contracted for us. So people can take a look at that also. Gene? You muted, Gene. Gene?
I'm there. You know, I think we covered, in fact, thank you for covering that in such clarity. We went over the options that we have, the appraisals, and the land that, the portions that we're taking. I think now it's a matter of bringing this forth to town meeting and letting the town's citizens make the decision. and letting the town's citizens make the decisions.
Right. And as I said at the beginning of this meeting, eminent domain is the last thing we want to happen. But it is something that we will advocate for in order to protect the natural resources at East Point. We hope that Northeastern will continue to negotiate with us to seek alternative developments on that site that will help accomplish their needs. We're open and willing to do that. But if that doesn't happen, at least as Chairman of the Board of Select, I am committed to protecting the natural resources of East Point. Tony?
Could I just chime in with one more comment? I think one question that a lot of citizens have been concerned with is whether the taking would be a proper taking. In other words, taking for a proper reason. And I think Attorney Masterman stated emphatically that taking this land for conservation purposes would not be inappropriate taking. And that's especially reinforced by the fact that Nahant's voters over 30 years ago, or around 30 years ago, designated this area as a natural resource area. So thank you, Attorney Masterman, for clarifying that because I know that's been a concern for many citizens.
Good point, Josh. Okay, why don't we open it up to questions and answers, Tony?
Okay. So if anybody that is on Zoom would like to ask any question, just send a chat, open up the chat and send your name to me and I'll add you to my list. I have a few here already. What I'll do is I will click on your name and ask you to unmute yourself so you can state your name, your address. And as we said in the beginning, let's try to, you know, I think that there's a decent amount of people that have questions. So keep it to one question per opportunity. And then we'll loop it back around and you'll have a second chance to ask your second question. And try to keep it to about a minute, I would say, to, you know, so that we can get through this nice and smoothly. And I will start with the first on my list here is B. Rogers. I'm going to ask that you unmute.
Okay, thank you. I would like to know, with the way you've explained the taking, that with the Chapter 79, we, number one, we do not have the option to back out if the valuation is high or than we expected. We are still obligated. And I didn't understand ownership with 79. You said the town will own it. And then later on, you said the town is not taking ownership, but an easement. Would you explain that, please? The difference between owning it and not owning but having an easement?
I'd be happy to take the question with respect to the ownership. What I, and I don't know if you were talking about what I said or what Jim said. What I said was, and I apologize if I wasn't clear, is that a town has the ability to take certain rights. They don't have to take everything. They don't have to take the fee simple absolute. They can take an easement, which allows the property owner to use the property, provided it's not contrary to the rights of the town or whomever has an easement over the property. So the town could, and I believe as Mr. Masterman, Jim said, the town is looking to take an easement or a conservation restriction over the property, which means that we're not going to own the property. What we are going to do is we're going to own the right to pass and repass, if it's an easement, over certain portions of the beach. And if it's a conservation restriction, depending upon how strict the restriction is, we are going to prevent the property owner from developing the property. It needs to be, it needs to stay in conservation. So that's the difference that I was talking about. With respect to the Chapter 79, when I say we own it, and I can see where your confusion was. I was a little careless in my words. What I meant was, when we file with the Registry of Deeds, when we record with the Registry of Deeds the order of taking, we then have the rights that we took. They vest right then and there. So if we took an easement, the day that we record that order of taking, we have the right to walk over that property and use the easement. If we took an entire property, the day that we file, we record that order of taking, we have the right to walk on the property. We own it. So whatever right we took, it is vested right when we record that order of taking with the Registry of Deeds, which is a lot different than the ADA, which we don't, the rights don't vest until the very end of the process, unless the other side doesn't contest it. And then it's a relatively quick, it's a relatively quick process. But that's the difference.
Let me add something about the easement, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Rogers. On the easement, think of it this way. Right now, if you own your own home, you have the right to exclude others. Same thing up at East Point. Because they own it in its entirety and the public has no right of access onto that property except in designated pathways, they could keep the public off of their land. What we would be proposing to acquire is the right, as Jeff said, to gain access to the conservation areas and to prevent Northeastern from doing anything to turn that part of their land into anything other than natural resource area. So we would own the right to go onto that land and to enforce it to be maintained as a natural resource area.
All right. Next on my list here is Dana Sheen. Dana, if you could unmute. I feel like I'm on a radio show, by the way, and I'm like, you're live. The Board of Selectmen.
Thanks, Tony. Can everybody hear me all right? Yeah, this question's gonna, I'd like to direct it to Mr. Masterman. And let me first say, I really appreciate, you know, an expert on eminent domain coming on and talking to us. We really appreciate that. So it's a basic question. I was wondering what the estimated legal costs in dollars or hours would be? And would it differ between 79 and ADA? And like the total cost, including expected appeal? So, Mr. Masterman, if you could comment on that, please.
I'm not sure that I can give you an answer to that. And I'm not trying to avoid the question. If the process goes by way of 79 and Northeastern doesn't contest the valuation, the legal fees would be de minimis. Going for a full-blown trial on a Chapter 79 proceeding, you're dealing with an estimate depending upon the nature of the contest. It could be $100,000, it could be 200, it could be less. Under ADA would be roughly the same. It really depends, Mr. Sheen, on whether there are sub-issues involved and how far we go. But the two processes are pretty similar in that.
So just to follow up on that, the city of Newton has a very similar case pending with BC. It's taking some land. And they appropriated $725,000. And it's going to be contested, so kind of similar. Does that make sense to you, $725,000 for legal fees?
Well, that'd be very nice. Again, I'm not entirely sure how they got that estimate. And I'm familiar with the case. It really does depend on any number of things. And I'll try to be evasive. I mean, I will be paid a fair amount, as will Mr. Blake. And it's going to be costly to litigate this case. There's no question about it. $725,000 seems like a perfectly reasonable amount of money to pay your lawyers. I think it's kind of high, though.
Jeff, maybe you could chime in on this?
You know, I agree with Jim. It's difficult to estimate the cost of litigation because we don't necessarily know where it's going to end. I think that there have been some figures thrown out here for this matter. And I think that anytime we throw out a figure, certainly anytime I throw out a figure, it is worst-case scenario. But it will take a significant amount of legal work if Northeastern challenges. And I suspect they will. They are, as we all know, they are well-staffed. And it will take a significant amount of legal work for both Jim and I. And so, like Jim, I don't feel comfortable giving an absolute dollar figure.
I think it's good to say that also there are experts involved. And let's be, you know, I want to be as transparent as possible. You've got an appraiser, you probably have engineers. Depending upon how Northeastern proceeds here, what they're going to claim and how they're going to approach it, there may be other, what we refer to as predicate witnesses, people that have to be prepared. So professional fees, other than the lawyers, might be costly. We don't anticipate that here, though. This is straight appraisal approach. And I don't think that you should, I don't believe you're going to see exorbitant fees here. But litigation is expensive. And it will go on for a while. And it will be costly in that regard. And once we understand what Northeastern's position is, Mr. Sheen, we probably can give you a much better sense as to budget, which the Board of Selectmen have been making very clear. That's what they insist upon.
All right, thank you. Next on my list is Mike Raworth. Mike, if you could unmute and give your address and question?
Thanks, Tony. My question has to do with the ramifications if we chose the route in the Second Statute 80 Alpha. The initiation of our procedure obviously would not vest title even to an easement in the town. So that means that Northeastern would continue to own the interest in question until the proceedings were concluded. So in the event that that were pursued and in the interim, if Northeastern began or continued construction on whatever it wanted to do in violation of the easement rights that we would have if we had taken it simply under 79, would that additional construction be taken into account in the valuation of the parcel? In other words, it would be valued at the point of the finding on valuation or at the point of the initiation of the procedure? And number two, if they did that, what would be the upshot in terms of the resulting effect on the parcel over which we had taken an easement? In other words, we'd still end up, assuming we concluded the procedure, with an easement, but perhaps an easement that had to go through several brick walls? Does that make sense?
Sure, let me try this. I believe, and I think this is what would happen, Raworth, did I get that right? I'm sorry.
Right, right.
That if we initiated an ADA proceeding, we would be able to get a stay or an injunction to stop Northeastern from doing everything.
I agree.
Right, so I don't think you would have to worry about having Northeastern improve the land and then having us to restore it in the event we ultimately acquired it. So that's what would happen there.
In either event, I gather that the valuation is to be assessed at the time of the initiation of proceedings on the part of the town?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Next, I have Elizabeth Berman. Hold on a second, let me find you on my list. If I can unmute. Here we go. Elizabeth?
Hi, Elizabeth Berman, 44 Spring Road. I'll put on my video. Forget the video. Anyway, this question is for Jim or Jeff. I was wondering, is there any scenario where Northeastern might adopt, will actually reject a sale, a sales comparison appraisal approach, and instead insist on a income-producing appraisal, claiming that the taking of the land diminishes their ability to receive grants or rental income or conference income or any of the other desirable activities that they anticipate from their project?
I'll start it, and I'm sure Jim will chime in as well. Lost profits and the like are typically not awarded, are not proper awards under eminent domain. They're too speculative. So your question was, would they possibly reject the comparable sale analysis in their valuation and go with an income approach? I don't know that that property is an income generating property. And based on the current zoning, I don't believe that even under its highest and best use, it could be income generating. Northeastern could certainly try. But I think that we would make a very good case that that's not a proper valuation method.
Correct. Ms. Berman, think of it this way. I may have been too, I may have glossed over the term income in a way that people may have misunderstood. When we're talking about income within a real estate valuation, it is rental income to the real estate. Now, it sometimes gets blurred when you're doing the shopping centers and percentage rents and things like that. Don't think of it in that way. When you're dealing with a property like this, that, as Jeff said, is not generating income, it has to do with whether it's rented out. Now, conferences and things like that tend to be regarded as business generation, what somebody's business is. And that is not considered in terms of real estate valuation. Think of it this way. And the example that's commonly used is if you have two restaurants, and they're located exactly in the same place. One's a McDonald's and one's Masterman's Hamburgers. The McDonald's is going to sell a lot more hamburgers than Masterman's is. But the real estate is the same. That's what valuation real estate is all about.
All right, thank you. Next on my list is Ken Corangelo. Let me find you on my list here, Ken. Hold on a second. Ken? See if you can unmute.
Hey, Ken, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Gentlemen, thank you for the explanation. To sort of carry the discussion beyond the confines of the Zoom meeting, is there a public-friendly document, sort of a user's guide or a simple something that shows the steps, the timeline and the decision points under each of the two eminent domain approaches?
I mean, that's something we could certainly put together. Put it up on the website, Ken. I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, I think it'd just be very helpful. I mean, the discussion here, complicated as it gets. There are 102 participants here. Obviously, this discussion needs to be understood by more people. So hopefully you guys have done that at some point for someone and just dusted off. But either way, Mark, if we could get something like that, I think we'd go for the public.
Okay.
Sure, there are specific milestones within each procedure that until there is litigation, they can be predicted. And we'll provide those to you.
Okay, and it does point to sort of a decision tree, depending on litigation, goes one way versus the other. Are there known paths, I guess? There, there should, there are there known paths, I guess?
We can, we can, we can tell you what is required by, by the Superior Court in terms of timeframes for this litigation, but those are all aspirational. And even those aspirational goals for getting litigation resolved has been tossed during COVID. So I think what we can do is provide you with the approach that we take to those things that we'll, we'll give you the definitive guidelines that the statute requires. And then our best judgment within a range of predictable dates that we can come up with.
That'd be great, thanks.
All right, Ken, I know you got another question, we'll come back to you. Next is Karen Regnanti. Sorry if I'm, if I'm pronouncing names incorrectly.
Thank you, Tony, you pronounce my name great. One of the very few peoples that do, or that. I have a quick question. First of all, thank you, everyone, for organizing this and for, for this. This is very informative and very helpful and really appreciate it. My, my quick question is, and this may go to Mark, or is, what is the status of any conversations with Northeastern about this, us doing eminent domain? Have we had any conversations with them about it? Have we gotten any feeling or, or comments back from them as to how they would feel about this and, and what their approach may be? And has there been any kind of legal conversations that have gone on either between our lawyers and theirs?
Well, there's, there's all of that. I can tell you, the last conversation I had with Northeastern, I believe, was maybe last March. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tony. And during those meetings, I expressed that the, the Board of Selectmen would be interested in working with Northeastern and seeking an alternative site on their property to help them accomplish their development goals. At the time, they were not interested in looking at any alternative sites. And that was pretty much the end of the conversation.
So are they aware that we are considering this option of eminent domain, Mark?
I am sure they are.
Yeah.
I am sure they are on this Zoom call, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, but, um, but not, we haven't had direct conversations with them where, where they, they, in a formal way that they, they know we're considering it. It's, it's more probably through the grapevine.
They are, they are aware of the possibility.
Okay, so, okay, well, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Next on my list here is Dr. Kathleen Lederos. Let me find you one moment. There we go.
Thanks, Tony.
You're welcome.
So my question is, what precedents are there for taking development rights? And by precedence, I'm interested in specific cases from a university over the top of a structure? And in the case where the university has already started and invested a lot in a project?
I'd be happy to, to, to address that. I, I can't cite any precedent for the exact situation that you just outlined. I do know that we represent, as I indicated in my earlier remarks, we represent a lot of cities and towns in the Commonwealth. It's not uncommon for us to take conservation restrictions. It's, in fact, I would say it's getting more and more common as, as we, we progress into a situation where there's less and less land out there for, open land out there. So it's, I, I would say that it's quite common for taking conservation restrictions and easements. With respect to taking against a, a university on top of, of, of an already built building, I think Northeastern, with respect to that portion, the bunker, is, is pretty unique. It, it's not unique in, in that I, I don't, I, I believe we, we certainly have the ability to do what we want to do, but there's not a lot of situations out there where a town would take a, a piece of property on top of a building because you, you'd either do that or you'd take the building. Here, it's, I, I don't know if I would necessarily even characterize the bunker as a building.
So how many, how many cases have you done where you are taking these development rights from a university? As opposed to, you know, a private landowner?
Oh, let me jump in. I, I'm not sure that I can answer the question off the top of my head, but I'm happy to go and research it. I don't remember. Look, Mr. Sheehan just mentioned that the city of Newton took almost twelve acres, about twelve acres from Boston College. You know, there's been many, many takings made on behalf of colleges. I can't tell you the last time a municipality decided to take development rights. What, what Jeff said is true, that municipalities have been taking conservation rights from many institutions for years. This is what, what is done when it's decided that, that cities and towns would like to protect their natural resources. It's, it's, it's not something that any city or town should take lightly. But it doesn't tend to take into consideration that particular user. The question is whether the land is threatened with development, regardless of the use. Whether it's not-for-profit use or it's for-profit use, the question is to elevate the conservation interest above the development interest. Now, one can debate that, and that's what this is the beginning of. But it tends not to worry about the user. It is the use in the future that is planned.
All right, hopefully that answered your question. Again, again, for those who have already been called on, and if you have a follow-up question, just send me another chat and I'll add you to the list again. Next is Marie Pazinski. Hold on one moment. All right.
Thanks, Tony.
You're welcome.
Actually, Roger had the question.
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to thank the attorneys, a great, great job explaining the process to us non-legal folks. And thanks, Tony, and the Board of Selectmen for a great meeting, great, very educational. Our question is, so we, we take the twelve-acre easement, which gives large park and bunker in the valley in between, great protection. Does that taking in any way constrict Northeastern from not taking down the Edwards Building and building a large structure on the footprint of the trailers and the Edwards Building?
I'm happy to answer that. As you've outlined, the taking, if we take twelve acre, twelve acres, a conservation restriction or the like, no, it does not affect Northeastern's ability to do what you just indicated.
The question is, what can Northeastern do with its remainder? Like we mentioned that they're going to leave intact. If the town authorizes the approach that we've probably proposed, or Selectmen have proposed, it is to be sure that Northeastern can continue to function exactly as they've been functioning for all these years, leaving intact all those buildings. Okay. Your question is now, can they take down some of those existing buildings and expand there? There's been note, there's been discussion about whether we would constrain Northeastern's future development on the remainder. That is still open for discussion. But as currently proposed, and we're talking about today, leaving it completely available for Northeastern, the only constraints would be the constraints undergoing today.
All right, thanks, Kim. Just want to remind folks, please state your name and address, please, when you ask your question. Next is Whit Brown.
Whit Brown, twenty-three Phillips Road. I think that Northeastern's been a good landowner for fifty-odd years. Does the process of eminent domain just allow a government entity the right to infringe on those or limit those property rights in a very just straightforward manner? Is there no debate? Is the likelihood that they're, that, that it's, it's a cut-and-dried thing? And I appreciate Mr. Masterson's answer, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. If the question is, does the town of Nahat have the right to take an easement for conservation purposes from Northeastern? As we have laid out, the answer is yes. Is there an opportunity for any landowner, under the threat of a taking, to come to the authority and say, to the town and say, look, can't we figure something out here? Then that's open, as it always is, for discussion. As Mark has indicated, that has not been fruitful. But, but the right to take resides in the municipality so long as it's for a bona fide public purpose, a valid public purpose, and conservation has proved time and time again in the courts to be one.
Jeff, do you have any?
I, I, I agree with Jim. I think he said it perfectly.
All right. Next is Paul Spurn. Hold on, Paul. Try to hit the mute, there you go.
Yep, I'm unmuted. It asked me twice. Okay, so I just want to return to the discussion for the last couple of, last couple of questions. It seems to me, and I'd like to hear the comments of our attorneys tonight, that if we focus just on an easement, preventing particular development in a portion of the property, that we leave ourselves open to the kinds of things that have already been posed. That is, the development on the rest of the property that may be objectionable for other reasons. And for Northeastern acting in other spiteful ways that will impinge on the use of the rest of the property. And I wonder if the attorneys could suggest ways of maybe opening the horizon for different actions we could take or perhaps different negotiation objectives for reaching a settlement with Northeastern that would prevent them from doing other objectionable things?
I'll take it first, Jeff. And I want to say this respectfully, I don't want to talk about what we might have advised the Selectmen as to specifics. However, there probably isn't anything we have been considering when we're talking about what to do out there. I mean, we've been through this every which way from backwards. The one thing that could be discussed with respect to your particular concern, Mr. Spurn, is, is Northeastern, or any, let's say, Northeastern is fed up with the town and they, they sell it to a third party. Let's use that, the generic next owner of these point. What could they do on the piece that remains unencumbered by the conservation easement? Would they just simply go ahead and build to the moon? Well, there are a number of controls already in place that have to satisfy and go through with that. But if, in fact, we were not confident that that is enough of a limitation, the taking power is such that we can shape that by taking air rights. So the development envelope is constrained even further. But every time you touch the part that remains and acquire more interests in the land, the more it's going to be costly. That's the more it's going to cost the potential buyer. But does, can a, can an eminent domain taking acquire interests that could limit development within a certain cube or envelope? The answer is sure.
All right, thank you, Jim. Next is Bea Rogers.
I guess this comes back to the question of ownership. If we have an easement, Northeastern does continue to own that property. Who is responsible? I mean, it's all maintained and now, who, who is then responsible for maintaining that land, maintaining the pathways and stuff like that? They own it, but they can't use it in the ways that they would like. What is their responsibility? What is our responsibility? And related, is there any issue of public access that comes with taking for a conservation easement? But my, I mean, my main question is, what, what happens to the responsibility for the property under these circumstances?
I, I'd be happy to at least start to answer the question, and certainly Jim can jump in. With respect, it will depend upon the interest that we're taking. If we're taking an interest to allow us to put trails on there, then we would be responsible for the maintenance of the trails. Your question about a conservation restriction and what rights that gives us is a good one. Because there are, I think, a number of definitions of a conservation restriction. I have seen some where all it does is allow, is prevent a property owner from developing the property, but does not give the, the municipality the right to enter the property. There are others where we have the conservation restriction that prevents the development of the property and allows passive recreation. It will all be determined on how we define that right that we take in our order of taking.
I don't think really to add more than, you can assume that if we acquire a conservation easement, that whatever cost there might be to maintain it as a conservation area would shift if there were any costs to the town.
Okay, next is Ken Corangelo. And here we go.
Here we go. Thanks. Question, and this is, and I apologize, I forget which of the attorneys mentioned this, but there was essential certainty that the public purpose won't be contested. The, the underlying rationale of there being a public purpose is just, it's not open to question. And I guess I'm wondering, if, if Northeastern puts ninety percent of the property into a binding conservation easement, could it not be argued that the legitimate public purpose has already been fulfilled? It just strikes me that that's something that could, that could reasonably be argued.
I think it goes, I, I, I think it was Jim that indicated that conservation is a public purpose that has been recognized time and time again in the Commonwealth, and he's right. Now, with respect to your question, if Northeastern put ninety percent of the property- Now, with respect to your question, if Northeastern put 90% of the property into a conservation restriction or or dedicated for for conservation purposes, if and and whether or not that would it whether or not that would fulfill the public purpose. And essentially, what you're saying here is defeat a taking. I guess it would depend upon what portion of the property was put into the into the into conservation, right? 90% of that property, in order to put a CR on 90% of that property, you're probably going to end up reserving a right, the the conservation rights on on all of the open space, because about 10% of it's already built on. But let's pretend that it's not, pretend that they they do it on on one side and not the other. I I think it it wouldn't defeat the town's taking and 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 determination that it's a public purpose, because it it really will depend on what we're taking, not what the use of the whole has been dedicated or the portion that we're not taking has been dedicated to.
It's fair to say, Ken, that if if Northeastern dedicated the land for conservation purposes that is aligned with what the town expects to achieve by a taking, there may be no need for taking. Whether there is still a right to take on top of that is one of these questions that there's almost no limit to what can be taken so long as the purpose is a valid public purpose. And the fact that it's dedicated privately to a public interest still doesn't mean that we could not superimpose upon their conservation restriction our own. But there'd be no need for that. One of the great questions that always comes up is if a it comes up in this context, and I hate telling war stories, but it might be illustrative. There are cases involving parking lots. The famous one in Massachusetts is in Falmouth for the ferries over to the islands. Some private owner owned a parking lot, and the Commonwealth came along and took the parking lot for a parking lot. And the and the the owner said, what are you doing? It's a parking lot. I'm using it as a parking lot. I'm using it. And the court sustained the taking. So the public ownership of that parking lot was a valid public purpose, notwithstanding the fact that the landowner was dedicated to exactly the same use. But I think your question is more to the practical impact if Northeastern were to come to the table and talk to the town about preserving that land. That so far has not occurred.
All right, we got about five more in line here. And again, please state your name and address. Next is Barbara Ducharme. Hold on one second. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Here we go.
Hi, thanks to all. So sorry, you can hear me, yes?
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks so much to everybody. My question relates to the use of whatever property is not taken under eminent domain. For example, you know, the seawater intake, I I don't think that's included in the parcel that the town would be taking. So what, if any, restrictions would be placed on the use of the property that Northeastern would retain after the town took its parcel? And thank you very much.
Today, there is none, as contemplated. In response to Mr. Spurn's question about what would happen if we were to allow them to do whatever they wanted, is there some way we could control that? I I I gave the answer that you could always shape the development potential on the parcel that remains. The discussion, however, to date, is to to leave Northeastern and whomever might own it after Northeastern exactly with the same use of the property that currently exists today, and that is all improvements as well.
Okay, next is Brendan Olmstead.
Hi, thank you all. So I had a question about the the revenue portion or the income portion about a Northeastern side. Since Northeastern basically sells environmental services and they do research at that facility, how, you know, I I would assume they can make a case that their and their research and their customers are paying for their service, that they can that they can show a monetary income associated directly with the research there. So how would that factor into the compensation for them if, you know, if the property is taken by eminent domain and they are deprived from either continuing their research or expanding their research capacity?
I want to jump in. The income generated from Northeastern's business, which is education and research, is not considered in terms of the value of the real estate.
All right. Next is Holly Barton. Hold on. Again, please state your name and address.
Hi, yes, this is. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Holly and Gig Barton, 45 Mayowas Road. And this has come up in a couple of answers, so. But it has to do with, I think, how we're going to decide what the shape and use of the of the of the restrictions will be on Northeastern. Specifically, I know we sort of talked a little bit about air rights, but I'd like to hear what the attorneys have to say about how we could incorporate that and how difficult it is. In other words, to build over the bunker or to build over the existing trailers as high as they want to go. How, in other words, is that, can we restrain it, and how difficult is that to do?
The eminent domain process is a surgical one. Whatever the town would like to do, we can do in the eminent domain world. There is no limitation as to what can be taken. It is always a question of cost. For every time you limit what Northeastern can do, there is a cost associated with it. By cost, I mean compensation is owed. So if the town wishes to approach the the acquisition of rights on the land that Northeastern is currently using for its marine science center, by, let's take a most drastic approach, it would be, take everything above the roof line on each of those buildings. This is, for example, only discussion purposes. Then there would be a compensation question associated with what the likely development would be, and how does that limit the the property and things to that.
Okay, next is Jody Groll.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. I have had some experience with the
Could you just, I'm sorry to interrupt, could you announce your address just for the record?
Jody Groll, 65A Bass Point Road.
Thank you.
I've had some experience at a public authority with some eminent eminent domain takings in which the severance damages far exceeded the actual easements or other fee simple takings that the agency made. I'm very concerned with the severance damages that may be involved in this, because the, in this circumstance, taking a conservation easement is is almost, to me, the same as taking a fee simple interest. And my question is, has there been any thought of, instead of taking 12 acres, take the entire 20 acres, which would include the marine science center, and then do a leaseback on the existing property? Some of the advantages of that is there should be no severance damages, and we would be their landlord and certainly be able to control really all of East Point, and just be in a better position of preserving the status quo. I know that under 79A, we would then have the issue of what we do with buildings and relocation costs if they choose not to rent from the town for their existing facility. But maybe there's another university that would like to rent a marine science lab. Now, that that's my question, if there's been any consideration of taking everything and then leasing back some sort of, you know, their current buildings so they can continue their marine science work.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I mean, I, it's really a political question. Have we talked about taking it in its entirety?
Yes, we have. We've discussed that, and I think on our appraisals, we've looked at the whole realm of possibilities, including taking everything.
In the appraisals are, you know, the people that have looked at this to date, what, I I know you had mentioned $200,000 per acre. Did that include severance damages to the rest of the property?
Yes. We found no severance. Northeastern will be permitted to continue to operate the marine science center the day after the taking, exactly as they've been operating on the day before the taking. It does not affect the operation of the marine science center, which, to use the the evaluation parlance, the highest and best use of the land continues to be exactly what is being used out there today. So we we deter, we have to assess severance damages, Mr. Groll. We have to, as you well know. The determination was made no severance.
All right, next is Ken Corangelo.
Here we go. This is so orderly on Zoom. Question, Mark, I I and I guess this is for Mark. If, I'm a little confused at the two threads of the conversation here, because if the intent is to work with Northeastern to find an alternate site, the alternate site would be the Edwards Building or that general area. At the same time, we're talking about taking air rights and using eminent domain to constrain them further. So what, in in your, ideally, where would where would the expansion go if not where it's currently proposed?
It would go it to a location that would be permissible in terms of the wetlands and vegetation areas. It would go in an area that would be mutual mutually agreeable between the towns and Northeastern.
On East Point?
On East Point. It would have to be a mutual agreement.
Okay. I'm still confused, but thank you.
Okay. You have a right to be confused.
All right, the next one is Dr. Kathleen Lederhoss. Again, if you could just, for the record, I don't know if I caught it the first time, but, you know, state your name and address.
Thanks, Tony. Kathleen Lederhoss, 8 Fennow Way. I guess what I'm primarily concerned is is just what is really the probability of the success of this case? It sounds like there's no precedent. Sounds like it's pretty complex. Are you guys aware that Northeastern announced that they are going to place a conservation restriction on the land that the the town is proposing to take? So given that Northeastern is publicly announced that they are going to do that, does that change or decrease further the probability of success of this case in your professional opinion?
Josh, you want to take that? You want me to?
Well, I thought it was more of an eminent domain question.
Well, I think the question, the 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 assumption is that Northeastern is placing a conservation restriction over the area that they propose on developing. I don't know how you can do both.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a bit of a, I mean, so what Northeastern suggested in some literature is that they would place a conservation restriction on the property after they developed the property. So I guess it's better than nothing, but it's not what the people of Nahat are asking of us, right?
I'm asking about the probability of success of the case. So in the lawyer's opinion, what is the probability of success, given that the future, the point of this is to protect the land, which is Northeastern is proposing to do in the future? So I'd like to hear from the lawyers, please.
If, this is Jeff, if you're asking me whether the probability of success, whether or not it would be a valid taking for a conservation restriction over property that already has a conservation restriction over it. I think Attorney Masterman answered a very similar question, but I think the the probability of success is high. Conservation is a public purpose, and that's what we look at, is to whether or not it's a valid taking. So as as Attorney Masterman indicated, we can certainly overlay our conservation restriction over theirs. However, I I think I I think the 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 question is a little confusing, or I'm a little confused, because you can't build a building and then put a conservation restriction on that building, right? If they're going to put a conservation restriction on the top of the bunker, they can't build on it. So what we're proposing to do is is we're proposing to take a conservation restriction over the top of the bunker, down in the valley, and other areas. And what that would do is prevent development. Northeastern is saying we're going to develop, and then anything else that we haven't developed, we'll put a restriction on it. So our conservation restriction will be significantly more than what they're proposing to do.
And next is Cora Long. Name and address, please.
We don't hear, we don't hear you, Cora.
All right, we'll come back to you, Cora, if you if. Try again. Next, Holly Barton. Second.
Thank you. This is a really basic question. I'm just getting confused. Can you specify, I guess this is more for the town of Nahat, what areas are we proposing to limit Northeastern from? In other words, I'm particularly interested in, obviously, Canoe Beach, Divers Beach, the walk that is like not directly into Lodge Park, that sort of hugs the coastline. Can you outline what's at risk and what's to gain from, I mean, what we're what we're planning on limiting them from? Thank you.
I can. It's it's evolving too, as we work through this, but we are looking at Canoe Beach. Um, uh, we're looking at the top of the bunker, the valley, uh, and, and the other, and the other Bathers Beach area.
So not, not the walk? Okay. Oh, thank you. Sorry.
You're welcome. I was gonna ask. I didn't answer that answer your question. All right. Thank you, Holly. Um, next is, uh, Jody Graw.
Uh, this is, uh, for Jeff Blake. Uh, in your explanation of seventy-nine A, could you also add, uh, the pro- payment of the pro tanto amount and, uh, interest to any award by the jury? Uh, if it was more than the pro tanto amount?
The, that would be seventy-nine, not seventy-nine-eight, but the, uh, the pro tanto amount, the award is from the time of the, the interest is from the time of the taking. The interest is pegged to the one-year treasury bill. And the interest, a- as we all know, there, the interest on the one-year treasury note is, is very, very low. I, I'm just trying to think. Actually, Jim and I just recently had a case where we had to, to calculate, he, he, I, he was, we were on the opposite ends of the V on that one, but we, we had to calculate the interest, and it, it's very, very low.
Right. So people, uh, Mr. Brawl, who's obviously an expert, has, uh, experience in this field. Uh, he used the term pro tanto, and I'm not sure that we've explained that. Uh, it's the term of art that was used, is used in Massachusetts essentially to talk about the initial offer. So in the seventy-nine procedure that you heard a lot about today, uh, the government acquires title immediately. That means that the government must pay the amount of money that it is not contesting is owed. That can be accepted without prejudice by, by the landowner to seek additional damages, but that initial sum is referred to as the pro tanto. It literally means as far as it goes, but everybody understands it to mean without prejudice. Once that money has been tendered, should the landowner, um, recover an additional amount of money in addition to the pro tanto, then the government owes interest from the date of the taking, which on the seventy-nine is the date that the order of taking goes to record, and the date it's ultimately paid. In these circumstances, you can figure it's going to take at least eighteen months to two years before it's ultimately litigated before a jury. It could be settled, uh, before that when interest is generally not considered as part of a settlement. And Jeff is a hundred percent right. The, it's tied to the T-bills, which are under a point now. Uh, a landowner can try to seek an addition, a higher rate of interest, but that higher rate of interest is adjudicated in front of the jury or a judge. It's always tied to what's considered to be the prudent investor. And this time, there, you know, the agreements between council who really don't want to litigate interest rates. The eminent domain, I, you heard, is a fascinating area of the law and valuation even more so. Interest rates generally can, you know, it's a tough one. And so we try to reach an agreement on that, and the range has come in between one and a half and two and a half, maybe even three percent a year.
Thank you. Cora, Cora Long, I'm gonna try, try you again here. See if you can unmute. Says you are unmuted, but I still can't hear you. All right. Sorry, Cora. Um, let's see. Michelle Capano, you're next. Second here.
All right. Before we go on, it's getting close to eight-thirty. So if you could, um, if there are others that have questions, try to get the people who haven't asked the question first. Um, I, I think it would be, be helpful. Go ahead.
Hi, it's Michelle. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Hi, thank you. Michelle Capano, twenty-nine Ocean Street. Um, given that we are now in litigation, is, does that stop Northeastern from making any changes to title? We talked about them, or they've stated they intend to put a conservation easement. Um, but I think we heard that that easement would be after they build. What, given that we're in litigation right now, can they put a conservation, conservation easement now before even shovels are in the ground? And we have litigation going on. So does that put everything on hold until the litigation is resolved?
Northeastern could put a conservation restriction on the property. Uh, what that actually would look like, they proposed a couple of things that wasn't satisfactory to the town, but they certainly could go ahead and do it. Um, it, uh, whether it affects the other litigation that's ongoing is a question I really can't answer. It would not affect, uh, an eminent domain.
Also, with respect to the litigation that is currently going on, um, we would rather not, and I typically don't comment on strategy, uh, with respect to ongoing litigation. So I, I, I think that Attorney Masterman's answer would be maybe not a hundred percent of what you are looking for, but as much as I, I would like to give as, as counsel.
Thank you. Uh, Bonnie De Orlando.
Thank you very much.
We can hear you.
Thank you very much, everybody. I really appreciate all your help. And to our two attorneys, Mr. Blake and Mr. Masterman, thank you for all the work you've put in on this already. Um, may I ask, uh, and maybe this question might be more for Mark and then the two attorneys to answer. And that would be, when Mark, you were mentioning that we were talking about, um, the more beaches, the beaches and also bathing beach on the other side. Now, that's where the, um, pipeline goes, the pipelines go in. In that case, would the easement affect what Northeastern has failed to do as far as taking care of them and removing older ones, and then also any improvements that they would want to do? Thank you very much.
Well, leave that up to, um, Jim or, or Jeff. Um, my understanding is that it would, uh, it wouldn't affect their current operations, correct?
Mark, I, I think that is correct. That at least that's the intent of, of what we've discussed, is not to affect their current operations. I think, as Jim had said, when he was asked about severance damages, the way we've, uh, we, we've reviewed this is that Northeastern will be able to do the exact same thing they're doing, um, the, an hour before the taken, taking and an hour after.
I know that we've been very concerned, and particularly our fishermen, uh, about the, uh, waters off Bathing Beach. Um, and I, you know, if, that's, that's a tremendous concern to them because it is affecting, um, their livelihood, let's put it that way. And, uh, you know, is, is that something that the town would be concerned with in a conservation effort? Because of course, the town does have certain, I believe, certain, uh, areas around it that is considered municipal territory.
Um, I know that, um, the, the intake for the, um, the water intake is currently a, uh, under permanent review with a conservation commission. Um, they filed their notice of intent, so, um, we have no intention of placing, you know, any restrictions at this point, um, under our eminent domain thoughts on, on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That was a political question. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, Bonnie. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I only got, uh, two more. Um, uh, Jody Graw. And that, and we'll just, we can cut it off after that. Um, hold on a second. Go ahead, Jody.
I already asked my question. I think that's a holdover. I'm done. Thank you very much.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. One, oh, my first mistake. I was doing so good. Next is, uh, B. Rogers. Um, here we go, B.
Um, yeah, just a quick follow-up to the question about, um, our current, uh, our, our current easements and access. So if, in fact, the town did take the property that we're talking about, not a hundred percent, but the twelve acres that we've talked about by eminent domain, the, the question about who maintains it was sort of semi-answered. But do the access guarantees that we now have up to Lodge Park, um, and, you know, the current situation, is that, does that continue to be part of, of what we are assured, or does that suddenly become, not suddenly, does that become a, another point of negotiation? Would, would we still have the guaranteed easement that we have now up to Lodge Park and the maintenance?
We have an easement, and the taking of a, of a different easement or, uh, other rights over a different part of the property would not affect our, our access easement.
Thanks.
Any more, Tony? It's about eight-thirty.
Um, one more. Looks like it's being relayed through Ken. Ken, I'm gonna unmute you right here, and then that's, that'll be the end of it there.
Pretend this is Ed Lonergan, uh, who's having technical issues. Mark, could you have it confirmed that the proposed activity involves an increase in footprint of less than twelve thousand square feet? And the balance is underground or over the existing building? Let's get to the overall, the overall area.
I'm not quite sure what the, the, the.
I think, I think what Ed's saying is this, what they're actually talking about impacting is twelve thousand square feet. That's the actual footprint of the, the structure that would be on top of the current land. It's not the entire twelve acres. So the, the, that's where I tie back to the ninety percent thing. I think that's, uh, that's what he's saying. We're talking about a sliver of the property that is in contention, not the entire thing.
We're talking about building on the east side of the bunker. Is that correct? Is that we, is, what, what the square footage of that is?
Yeah. Is it only twelve thousand, less than twelve thousand square feet and it's actually underground?
Yeah. Well, their plans have changed so much over time. I'm not quite sure. I, I can tell you exactly what it is today.
Okay.
Josh?
Well, um, what they've told us, um, is fifty-five thousand square feet new. Uh, maybe that's been rounded down to fifty thousand square feet new, but, uh, just for perspective, um, that's almost twice the size of the Johnson School new. Um, so that's my comment on, um, the sliver comment.
Okay.
Okay. Is that it with the questions, Tony?
Um, the last question looks like from Marie Pazinsky was relaying Cora's question, which was an update on last week's, uh, fourth decision. If you'd like to provide that, but we are at eight-thirty-five. It's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I don't, uh, I'll leave that up to town council. There was a superior.
I'm sure, I'm sure you'll explain it at the next board of select meeting on Thursday and anyways.
Yeah, we can get into that next, next Thursday.
Hey, uh, Mark?
Go ahead, Gene.
Yeah, if, if you take a look at this piece that they sent out, um, just this week, the Marine Science Update, their seventh edition. When they're talking about square footage, they're indicating here that they're adding up the east and west sides of the bunker and the bunker itself. They're not talking about, and, and I think it's misleading because I think they truly are looking for fifty-five thousand square additional feet. Yet on here, they're suggesting that is seventeen thousand on one side, eighteen thousand on the other, and the balance in the Murphy bunker. So, and, and in fact, there's a lot of misprints on here, I'll call them, to, to make this thing look appetizing to the general public.
I understand. All right. Um, well, thank you all for attending tonight. Uh, you know, this, this may not be the last meeting that we held, held on this subject. Um, we may come back over the next month or so with, um, with some more follow-up informational meetings, um, as the town contemplates, um, its next action. So, uh, Josh, did Jane, you have anything to say before we sign off?
Just, um, great session. I'm, I'm really happy that, um, Bernie Blake and Masterman were here to, um, help us understand this process. And, uh, so thanks for that. And, uh, especially thanks for all the people for taking time to, to, uh, log in. Thanks. Bye.
Yeah, and just one concern I had, and I picked up on it throughout the night, is people talking about alternative sites and future building plans and conservation restrictions. If you look at the environmental impact report, I know everybody hasn't got that opportunity. But if you look at it, it shows three alternatives in there. The one that they picked, obviously, is the one we're dealing with now. There are two other alternatives, which I personally don't think are alternatives. I think they're future plans. And that would be where the Edward is now and then southwest of where they are. But just something to think about as we go through this. I'm not sure that everything we're hearing or seeing is accurate. But great job tonight, guys. Thank you so much.
All right. Let me just end it by, uh, Tony, thanks for coordinating this, putting this together. And, uh, Jim Masterman and Jeff Blake, thanks so much for, um, for joining in. Um, you've, um, you've really helped us out a lot here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Most welcome.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Seconded? I have a second, Josh?
Seconded with my microphone on this time?
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing, seeing, now all are favor?
Josh, I have my.
Jean, can't the eye?
Mark, I'll deny. Good night, everybody. Thanks for joining.
Good night.
Thank you all. Good night.